Hello to everyone, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the May 9th, 2017 regularly scheduled meeting of the Alexander County Board of Education to order, and I would like to recognize Board Member David Odom for our invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this assembly and the many blessings we've received as a community. Herefore, we ask you preside of this meeting, let our decisions be founded in fact and truth, and all thanks to your glory, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Now I'd like to recognize, is it Ryland Austin? Hi, how are you? Ryland is a 6th grader at West Alexander Middle School. She's the daughter of Stacy and Janet Austin of the Bethlehem Community. Her twin brother Matthew is also a 6th grader at West Alexander Middle School, and her older brother Isaac is a 9th grader at Alexander Central High School. She's gonna lead us in our pledge tonight. Thank you for coming.
Pleasure. Attention, salute, the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Board members, you've had a chance to look over the agenda. Couple of reports have been moved around, but nothing has been added. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Sunday.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion, question, additions or deletions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Motion carries seven, well, I'm sorry, any opposed? That motion carries seven, nothing. I will now recognize Dr. Jennifer Heffner for our honors and recognitions, because we have a lot of them today, a lot of talented folks here.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. It is my pleasure to present the honors and recognitions portion of the board meeting, and tonight we will be recognizing two groups of high school students for their accomplishments. First, we will start by recognizing the state FFA Dairy Judging Champions. Marty Pennell, will you please assist me with these? For the second time in six years, Alexander Central's Future Farmers of America have won the state FFA Dairy Judging Competition. They will represent North Carolina at the 90th National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. Over 270 students were in attendance on April 8th at the Iredal County Fairgrounds, representing schools across North Carolina, from Beauregard to Camden County. There are over 260 high schools with FFA chapters in North Carolina, and Alexander Central holds the state champion title for 2017. That deserves a round of applause. Team members, please come forward. Ethan Sprinkle, Emily Prince, Brian Sandifer, and Isaac Chapman. And I'm going to ask your advisors to come up also. I'm going to keep talking, and I'm also going to invite some of the advisors up if they're here, okay? Ethan Sprinkle was the high-scoring individual on the team. The FFA advisors for the team are J.D. Sink, Scotty Cook, and Tyler Mitchell. If any of the advisors are here, please come forward. Give them a round of applause. Tyler, I will want you to convey my heartfelt gratitude for the support and guidance you give, not only to those in your CTE classes, but also to the FFA students. Bryant Chapman of Chapman Dairy was a local expert and coach for the team as well. Is Bryant here by chance? Give him a round of applause. Bryant was on the state-winning team in 2012. The win was especially sweet for Ethan and Bryant, as they are seniors at Alexander Central, and they have collectively competed in over 20 FFA competitions during their high school experience. Contestants are scored based on how well they apply dairy cattle evaluation skills learned in the classroom, and each team evaluates six classes of dairy cattle and defends the reasoning behind their evaluations to a panel of judges. Participants also completed a written test and worked collaboratively to select appropriate herd composition. Completing these activities successfully requires a very good understanding of both animal science and herd management skills. Again, we say congratulations to Ethan, Emily, Bryant, and Isaac. A job well done. David Odom, will you assist me with the next recognitions? Some advisors that I would also like to recognize tonight, I know that we have a couple at least in attendance. We are going to be recognizing Skills USA State Winners, and that would not happen without very good and committed advisors. I would like the following to please come forward. Raimi Robinson, Josh Bowles, Marilyn Frick, Angie Ford, Roy Hadley, Teresa Jennings, and Advisors, I want to say thank you and express my gratitude for the work you do with our CTE students, and in particular, the work you do with Skills USA. A job well done. Skills USA is a national nonprofit student organization that serves students enrolled in career and technical education training programs at our nation's public high schools and colleges. Skills USA's mission is to empower its members to become world-class workers and responsible American citizens. Skills USA complements technical skills training with instruction in the employability skills that make a well-rounded worker and citizen. Founded in 1965, Skills USA has developed nearly 9.5 million workers through active partnerships between employers and educators. On April 26th, 27th, and 28th, 18 of our high school CTE students attended the State Leadership and Skills Conference held in Greensboro. These students competed in some of the 100-plus contests offered to secondary and post-secondary students in the state of North Carolina. Skills USA is an important part of what career and technical education is all about, while pushing students to new levels beyond the classroom. These opportunities help our students develop the technical skills needed, but also the soft skills needed to be successful in the workplace. All the students prepare a resume and even perform an interview as part of the contest. Over 100 industry partners, such as Lowe's Home Improvement, Adobe, and Irwin Tools, help support the competitive events. Below, we are going to recognize students that placed and were awarded medals for being in the top five in the state of North Carolina. We also had students competing in firefighting and architectural drafting, but those students did not place in the top five. The following are certainly to be congratulated for their recent accomplishments. Starting with the state's first-place winner, Ganon Millsaps for Basic Healthcare Skills. Because he was a first-place winner, Ganon will advance to the national competition that will be held in, help me, Louisville, Kentucky. Great. Secondly, we're going to recognize Nicole Miller. She was a second-place winner in Basic Healthcare Skills. Next, Elizabeth Rector, third-place Basic Healthcare Skills. Grant Mitchell, third-place Carpentry. Zach Pennell, fourth-place Carpentry. Andrew Jones, second-place Electrical Wiring. Blake Ledford, third-place Electrical Wiring. Wesley Dunford and Nick Howard, fifth-place Additive Manufacturing. And last but certainly not least, Holden Ritchie, fifth-place Tool ID. Okay, good luck with this, Ms. Mead. Get all of them in a picture. Folks, these are the best in the state of North Carolina. Give them a round of applause. A job well done, thank you. And I have to say, I don't know who made this happen, but rarely do we ever have all students present for recognitions. I applaud you for that as well. Thank you.
All right, no one has signed up for public comments, so we're gonna move to the business portion of our meeting. So if anybody wants to make a fast exit, now's a great time.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you for coming. No, I'm, I'm there.
Adele, Adele Danny. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
See ya, bye.
There's just some things I can't give up. Yeah. Yeah. Does that mean this is it? No. I'll be out here about 10 minutes. Yeah. No. Yeah, really, like you would not. They're wishing I didn't give up. Yeah. Which is like, yeah. That was great. Hot winners. I told Harry, I said, you can learn some of these kids. Okay, Board Members, you've had a chance to look over the consent agenda in your packets. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries seven, zero. We're gonna move on to reports. Our first committee report is the Budget Committee Report, and I will recognize Vice Chair Scott Bowman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is from the Budget Committee. The Alexander County Board of Education met for their regular meeting, monthly meeting on Monday, April 11th, 2016. At that meeting, the Budget Committee made a motion to begin the process of investigating the closure of Telesville Elementary School and school consolidation. This motion was passed five to two vote. This investigation has been completed, and school closures is not being considered by the board at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman, and I'll recognize Board Member Harry Schrum for Facilities Committee Report.
Thank you. Based on the fact that school closure is not being considered by the board at this time, this Facilities Committee would like to work with Dr. Heffner and Maintenance Director, Mr. Dell Robertson, to develop a three-year plan that addresses facility needs at all schools. Pressing issues that will drive this three-year schedule will include student safety, ADA compliance issues, and curb appeal at each site. The gymnasium at Sugarloaf Elementary School will have structural and floor issues addressed during the summer months to ensure student safety. Also, each school will have an annual checklist completed to check for issues such as roof leaks, gutter problems, foundation concerns, in order to develop a repair and replacement schedule to keep all schools operational. And if you, let me go back to the ADA. If anyone wonders what ADA is, that's American Disabilities Act, and that's a pressing issue for us right now. So that's our recommendation.
I think that you're presenting that in the format of a report, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we do not need to take action on that at this time. And I would just like to thank the board for all their work. It's been a lot going on the last year with regard to our facilities and our schools, and I'd like to thank the staff at each school that was deeply affected by this, as well as all the community members that came out to support their schools. So, we want to thank all of you for that. We've got a lot more work to do, but we've made a lot of progress in the last year, and I think this board feels comfortable moving forward, as we've just stated, at this time. And the only other thing I'm gonna say is, I have a son who's graduating this year, and he's getting ready to pitch in a state playoff game. So I am going to take an exit right now to go watch him and turn it over to Vice Chair Bowman, but I wanted to be here for the reports of the facilities and the Budget Committee. So, that being said, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Bowman, and it will be reflected in the minutes. Thank you.
And shall we say, go Cougars?
Yes. No pressure. Thank you.
Good luck to you. Okay, as we carry on, our next report is the Before and After School Care Update. This is Ms. Macy Jones, Director of Ed Start, she will present.
Mr. Chair, and to the board, good evening to all of you. I'm going to try and make it through this without coughing and eating cough drops. I was diagnosed with bronchitis last Monday, and so I'm still kind of battling that, so just be patient with me. I'm here tonight to just give you a little update on before and after-school care program, which I direct. When I took over in 2012, my assistant Jennifer Anderson and I started doing some research, and we were looking at the last time that fees had been increased for the before and after-school care program, and the increase in cost and supplies, and just making our program better. And we determined that we have not had a fee increase since 2008, 2009. So I'm here tonight to ask you if in the next month or so, as you have discussions, if you will consider a fee increase for before and after-school care. Right now, it costs $15 a week for before-school care. That's from 6:00 a.m. until 7:30 a.m. That's $3 a day. After-school care is $35 a week, from 3:00 until 6:00. I know the bells don't ring until about 3:10 or 3:15, but the staff, they gather, start gathering children around 3:00. And that is $35 a week, so of course, what is it, $7 a day? And then it's $50 a week for both, so that's $10 a day for before and after-school care. I'd like to ask you to consider at least a $5 increase. That would take the fees from $15 for morning care to $20. After-school care from $35 to $40, and for both, from $50 to $55. That's a dollar-a-day increase. And to support, the reason for this increase, I'm asking that we could use it to help support the increase in cost for the additional early-release days. We have to bring staff in more days for that. Also, if the state gives the mandate or says that we're supposed to give an increase to our staff, I'd like to be able to offer that to the childcare employees as well. Another reason is the rising cost of supplies and materials. Our children do activities in the afternoons, and of course, over the last eight or nine years, those costs have gone up. Another reason is the state of North Carolina tells us that we are required to provide mandated training, because we are licensed centers, and we have to pay fees for those trainings a lot of times. So with that in mind, I'm just asking that you would give it some thought, and I'll come back before you in June. I welcome any questions that you have, and that's basically why I'm before you tonight. Any questions for me?
Macy, to clarify, to make sure that I understand, 15 in the morning would increase to 20. 35 in the afternoon would increase to 40, but the two combined would increase to 55.
We don't want to do too much too fast, and we don't want it to be a burden on families, but at the same time, we're one of the lowest in the county. I've done some research the past couple of years, and it's about $85 a week in some places, and on up to 125.
Thank you, Macy. Okay, now we're, school report from West Alexander Middle School, and Dr. Chad Maynor presenting.
Vice Chair Bowman, members of board, I'd just like to start by saying thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to present to you this evening. I'll try to make this as timely and quick as possible, but still yet try to touch on a lot of the great things we've been doing since I was able to talk with you last spring. So, first slide. Okay. One of the things that I think, without a doubt, makes West Alexander Middle School so great is we have an outstanding staff, as well as some pretty amazing students. I would love, like to point out that for the last three years, we've exceeded expected growth. 100% of our staff either met or exceeded expected growth during the 2015, 2016 school year. As far as students, our attendance rate was in the 95th percentile of the state at 96.65%. Myself, I've had the pleasure, and I want to, I guess, give a shout-out to Dr. Curry, as well as Mr. Roni at this time. I've had the pleasure to present at three separate conferences over the last couple of months. That's a little outside my comfort zone, this public speaking is not one of my number-one favorites, but they've encouraged me to step outside of that. And as I had the opportunity to present at the conferences, I realized just how far we are ahead of a lot of other schools across the state, as far as implementing interventions, as well as enrichment opportunities for our students to excel. With myself, Mr. Draper, as well as our instructional coach, Ms. Curtis, and our school counselor, Ms. Calhoun, will be presenting this summer at the Middle School Summit at High Point University. I believe the date on that's July 18th, and talk with other middle schools as far as what it's looked like for us. But I do want to thank Dr. Curry, as well as Mr. Roni, for the opportunity to do that with them over the last couple of months. Next slide, PBIS works, and if you'll look at the data there as far as the numbers, and Dr. Griffin, if you can clip up, click on the discipline data graph, it'll be a bar graph pull-up in just one second. And from 2009, I believe it is, my eyes are not as good, and we might have to flip back in a minute, but from 2009, from where it started, pre-PBIS, we had a 466 referrals at West Alexander Middle School. And I'd like to, at this time, recognize the number of people who contributed to this positive improvement. The first being Ms. Gant. West Alexander Middle School was one of the first schools in the county to step out front and move forward with PBIS. I think the program was either in place one or two years before I actually arrived at West, so a big shout-out for her, because at the time, we heard about this at principal's meeting, none of us really knew a lot about it, so would like to shout-out to her. I'd also like to give a shout-out to this, Mr. Andy Palmer, who was big as far as the early implementation piece, as well as the first two years with me as principal at West Alexander Middle School. Mr. Jason Evans, currently the Alexander Early College Principal, and then Mr. Charles Draper, current Assistant Principal. He's done an outstanding job with keeping the program going, implementing a lot of resources to address our discipline referrals, and also the staff. The staff have bought into the program, and they've done outstanding job of rewarding positive behavior, holding students accountable, and figuring out creative ways to help them be successful. So, special shout-out to them, Mr. Draper and Ms. Storns, our PBS co-chairs. They actually presented in Avery County back in the fall, I believe it was, or maybe it was early spring, I think the weather, throw them back a little bit, presented in Avery County as far as what we're doing here, as they were interested to learn what we were doing at West Alexander Middle School. Dr. Griffin, go back to the slides. Next slide. We're continuing with our intervention enrichment efforts, and we're still able, with some creative scheduling, to offer several students who are in need of double-dipping in both math and reading, the opportunity to receive both of those. One of the ways we've been able to do that is with Nikki Heffner, she's our in-school suspension coordinator. She has a group of 7th and 8th graders during one block of their exploit toys, as well as Ms. Kim Longman, our media coordinator, who has a group of 6th graders that she works with in the media center during one of their two exploit toys. This is our second year, we've been able to offer a resource block for students in grades 6, 8. We continue to offer STEM, computer literacy, financial literacy, Battle of the Books. Something new this year, Coach Key, and has offered Hunter Safety, and we've had about 80 young men and women who have completed the Hunter Safety Course, which is a pretty big deal, just the awareness of safety with firearms, and, you know, offering them that opportunity to receive that at school, I think's pretty, pretty special. And Coach Key, and as you know, has done a great job. And Coach Keyan, as you know, has done a great job with that, as he does with all things. CPR, we've offered that to all of our eighth graders. That's a graduation requirement that we're offering in eighth grade, so once the students get to the high school, they don't have to worry about taking that. We offer a high school success group, that's run with this Kim Howell. It's aligned with the habits of highly effective teens. We've also done a book study with sixth grade of the leader and me. As you know, Ellendale's implemented a program as well as Hidden Light, I believe, but Ellendale being our feeder school, several of those students approached us at the end of last year wanting to tell us a little more about the program. So the place that we've started this year is that we've started with a book study, and all the sixth grade teachers, myself, the counselors, instructional coach, Mr. Draper have participated in that. We actually have about four teachers that are going to be visiting Bailey Elementary School in just a couple weeks to see how they've implemented that at their school. It's a much larger school, and I'm sure it'll look very different than, than our school, but it'll give us an idea. Hannah Thomas, formerly a language arts teacher at West Alexander Middle School, was there. I spoke with her after Mr. Draper had contacted the principal, and have had conversations. They're going to go down there, I believe it's next Wednesday, actually, to visit that and see what it looks like in the middle school. Our school store, yearbook committee, jazz band, honors course, and WHAMs TV are all also currently fully operational as well during intervention and enrichment, and offer another opportunity for many of those students. Satisfied about the Duke Energy NC Beautiful Grant, I want to give an update. Mr. Ryan Rao, one of our sixth grade science teachers, received a grant from Duke Energy NC Beautiful to get chickens. We actually have chickens at West Alexander Middle School. They're about two months old now. The chicken coop is located adjacent to our greenhouse. It's a very nice, he's done outstanding job with building the chicken coop, the fence around it. The students have enjoyed it thoroughly, all of his students, as well as the other students, have enjoyed that opportunity. Many of our fifth graders, when we were doing tours just a couple of weeks ago, said, chickens, why are the chickens here? I said, yeah, we got chickens, there's a pool on the roof, all kinds of stuff. You'll love it here. So you'll love it here. But they did enjoy it, and in about eight months, they'll begin laying eggs. So the students are excited about that upcoming group as well. Also, I'm excited to report with the help of Dale Roberts from Maintenance, our greenhouse is fully functional, we have gas now. Mr. Rao's class, as well as Ms. Whitehurst's class, is using our greenhouse with some plants. Many of those students took those plants home today. Also, Ms. Kahler's EC class, they go in there and use that as well. So I'm excited. Previously, we've used it for storage and other purposes that sort of left it short of what it needed to be. So I'm excited that we're, we've got that up and running this year. An update, remember, back in the summer, I've had the rare request from the principal to ask for more testing, and I made that request, and we completed the Iowa assessments back in the fall. We had approximately 350 students to participate in that, a little over 500. In the upcoming weeks, those students will be recognized, we'll have a dance with free concessions during the school day after lunch, and being the afternoon, I've contacted the DJ. I'm currently trying to keep the date private from the students because it's in the end of the testing window, so I don't want them to get too focused with the dance too soon and forget the testing that they must complete in the process as far as the standard state testing. We received an email from the park court on May 4th telling us the money is coming, but if the money's not here by the time we have that, the students will get the dance. I'll stand by my word, what I promised them when they did it, when they signed up for it, so they'll get rewarded and they'll have a great time. Recommendation for what we would do came from our student council. We met a couple of weeks ago with them during clubs, threw out a couple of options, it might be a possibility, and seemed that dance and food and all those goodies were the most popular, so that's what we're going with. And then the last slide, of course, is on behalf of the faculty, I just want to say thank you, Board of Education, for your continued support. Thank you district level leadership for your support and for allowing us to do what we love each and every day. As John Kindy said, children are the world's most valuable resource and its best hope for the future. I'd like to close, and I'm certainly taking questions following the video, but we did a little project, and the idea actually generated from Parkway School District in St. Louis, Missouri, and I'd like to share it with you, but before then, I'd like to give a shout out to Dr. Anna Shook, her husband Andrew Shook, as well as April Walsh, who sort of spearheaded the, the video here that we'll share with you. All right, thank you. Hopefully you enjoyed that as much as we did making it. Once again, thanks so much to Dr. Shook, Ms. Walsh, Andrew Shook, her husband. I think West is pretty special, but I'm biased. I'm sure every principal gets up here, tells you their place is pretty special, and I know it is to them, but just want to say thank you for the opportunity to allow us to do what we do each day. We feel like we've had a great year, we've got a lot of big days ahead of us. We'll work hard to finish strong, but once again, if you have any questions, I welcome those at this time.
Thank you. Next will be our superintendent report, and I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Heffner.
First, I want to start by thanking board members for their attendance at the of the year celebration held last Thursday. It was a wonderful event, and it was a great opportunity to recognize and reward professional excellence throughout our school system. Also, I wanted to remind you of some important dates, they are quickly approaching, and the attachment will be on the agenda later this evening. I didn't get it to Deborah in time to attach it for you to read tonight, but it will be there, so you can get these dates and add to your calendar. Sunday, May 21st at 3:00, the honors ceremony at the high school auditorium. Friday, May 26th, beginning at 8:30, the scholarship ceremony at the auditorium. Then we have this Friday, Leadership Day at Ellendale, that starts at 8:30 and ends at 11:00. And on May 19th, Leadership Day at Hidden Light Elementary, starting at 9:00 and finishing at 11:30. I told you last month that graduation is scheduled for Friday, June 9th, beginning at 7:00 at the high school stadium, and you know that's probably the biggest day of celebration for more than 300 children, because one chapter ends and a new one begins that night. So I would really encourage you to be there, it is certainly something special. Our June board meeting has been moved up a week. We're going to meet on June 6th at the auditorium with a retiree reception being held beginning at 5:00 in the high school's cafeteria. I would ask that you make it to that reception also. As of today, school visits have been scheduled for Taylorsville and West Alexander Middle School. We're going to go to Taylorsville on Thursday, that is this Thursday, May 11th, and we will go to West Alexander on Tuesday, May 23rd. I would ask you to arrive at the school site by 11:30. Another celebration that we're really jazzed about, and I don't know if Sherri Williams is in here, she's probably preparing some food or something, but she is our school food service director, and she's being recognized as the state's director of the year at a banquet held at the Corey Convention Center in Greensboro at 7:00 on Thursday, June 22nd. Again, that's Thursday, June 22nd in Greensboro. I am planning to go, some of the leadership team will be planning to attend the banquet. I would offer that you are welcome to ride with any of us, because I hope you will join me as we celebrate Sherri Williams at the state level. We are proud of her work and dedication, and if you know anything about her, she is second to none, and I'm so thrilled about that recognition. We have, on a less happy note, we have received notification that the 21st Century Learning Grant for the after school program at Taylorsville is not going to be refunded after this school year. The program will officially close in June with no summer opportunities offered for students. We are very disappointed about the decision, but we will reapply for the grant in the future. Under current state and federal initiatives, I fear that a lot of grant funding could be at risk, and I needed to share that with you tonight. Sharon McCaffey and I will be making a budget presentation for the commissioner's work schedule, or excuse me, their work session. It's scheduled for Monday, May 15th. And then lastly, I'm pleased to tell you that West Alexander Middle School will be highlighted on WBTV tomorrow at 5:00 for a feel-good story. I don't know how often you watch the news, but it is rarely an occurrence when it's a feel-good story. So tomorrow night at 5:00, West will be featured in a feel-good story. Kristen Hampton visited their school today, and the story is going to highlight a set of quadruplets and three sets of twins that have participated on the track team this school year, along with an additional four sets of twins that attend the school. I don't know what's in the water in the western side of the county, but if you want multiple births, it might happen there. But I just want to say a special thank you, Dr. Mayner, to Danny Brown. He is a health and PE teacher. He reached out to WBTV and said, hey, we think we have something kind of unique at this school, and we want you to come and, and tell about that, instead of some of the negative things that make the press. So tomorrow night, tune in at 5:00, and you will see some, some really neat children. I also learned today that they haven't come home yet, but one of our teachers at West gave birth to a set of twins this week, and then the counselor over there has a set of twins. So Dr. Mayner has taken their pictures and had, he has sent those to the news station, hoping that they'll make the story also, because it evidently also spreads to the staff over there. But that is really the last thing that I would, would like to share. So word, word of warning, if you go to work at West, what might happen. But that is the last thing that I, that's the last thing I wanted to share. Do you have any questions?
And what, what channel was?
WBTV, Channel 3. Channel 3. All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Heffner. Now it's time for unfinished business, and first up is Ms. Sharon McCaffey with our proposed Board of Education policy revisions, second reading.
Okay, we had 15 policies and one regulation that came up for first reading last month. I have not heard, they were presented to the principals and to you, and I have not had any questions or asked for revisions from the original policies that you were given. So I ask that those be approved on the second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. I think your next, next is having with new policies.
We have two new policies that are up for the second reading this month, and return to work and employees' travel and other expense reimbursements. And again, we presented those last month, and I have had no suggestions or recommendations for those.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries also. Okay, now we're moving on to new business, and Ms. McCaffey, you're still up for new policies.
Okay, we have three new policies up for consideration for the first reading this month. Governing Principal Student Success Policy 1200, Automated Phone and Text Messaging Policy 5008, and Federal Grant Administration Policy 8305. And we'll bring those back next month for the second reading.
Thank you. Section B, proposed first readings.
Okay, there are four revised policies up for first reading this month. Physical, in the 8,000 series, physical goals 8,000, budget planning and adoption 8100, grant and funding for special projects 8210, and school finance officer 8510. And we'll bring back those for the second reading next month.
Next up is our ACS Beginning Teacher Support Program Plan, and I'll recognize Dr. Phil Griffin.
Vice Chair Bowman, members of the board, Dr. Heffner, have before you a copy of our Beginning Teachers Plan for this school year, 1617. As part of our Beginning Teacher Support Program, we have to put together a plan of support for our new teachers, and that's what you have before you. It's also part of our compliance. You guys have to know what exists in that plan and be able to hopefully sign off that you agree with what we've put together for this year. I recommend, or I would like to ask that you approve our, our Beginning Teachers Plan for this school year, please.
Okay. Members of the board, you've heard the, do I have a motion? So moved. Second.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any noes? And that motion carries. Thank you so much, Dr. Griffin.
Thank you for your support.
Next up is our Proposed School Facility Use Policy and Rate Change, and I've recognized Ms. Renee Mead.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Heffner. I present to you the recommendation from the School Facility Use Committee. As you can see, we have tweaked the policy a little bit, and essentially I'm asking for two changes. The first change is the updated policy that would allow for sanctioned travel teams to use our facility for the purpose of tournaments, games, and competitions. In the original policy, we made concessions for travel teams to be able to use the facilities at a reduced rate for practices. So what we are proposing this year is to allow them to be able to use the facility for games, tournaments, or competitions, depending on what type of sport it is, at a reduced rate, which would also be the $5 per hour per facility, per team, with the addition of $150. hour per facility, per team, with the addition of $150 convenience fee. Supervision fees would still apply as needed. The current rate is $5 per hour, per team, per facility, and we're not asking for a change in that. That would stay the same.
Yes, ma'am. Could you, the convenience fees for lights and trash and things such as that?
That, and we had outlined last year on the rate schedule where we had the convenience fees. And what we did was just set a flat fee this year for the travel teams, to allow them to be able to project, because it would be hard for somebody to count every time we have a travel team having a tournament, the number of participants that they would have. So we just set it at a flat rate. The second recommendation or recommended change is to establish a reduced rate for legal nonprofits and incorporated churches that apply for and fulfill a community partnership agreement. That community partnership agreement will outline requirements for the nonprofit group or church as follows. The agreement will be completed by August 31st each school year and remain in effect for the entire school year. No partnerships will be granted after August 31st for that school year. The nonprofit must be a legal nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) example, and churches must be incorporated. The use of the facility must be for a student activity with proper adult supervision at all times. The requested dates of use must be pre-approved by the principal or the school facility scheduler and must not be in conflict with school activities or functions. The church or group will provide volunteer time to the school at a rate of one hour per each hour that the facility is used, and this is to be considered an in-kind contribution from that group. In return, the school system will apply a reduced rate waiver for the group or church in the amount of $5 per hour. And of course, with this also, supervision rates would apply if needed. Each school will maintain its school partnership agreements and submit them to the central office for the waiver to be applied for the school facility use.
I do have one question here. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. The showing proof that they are a legal nonprofit, who will they give that information to?
That would come here, to the central office.
And thank you, because I had some questions. You know, you helped answer my questions earlier in the week, but the, such as the Good News Club would fall into this category, but it would be on each church and each school to do the agreement?
That is correct.
So the schools, I guess, we probably should get the word out, you know, for the churches, through the schools, however we need to do that, so that they'll understand that they can get the reduced rate.
Well, we are hoping that this being in the paper today for tonight will help do that also. But then we will ask each of the principals to contact those that currently use their facilities and extend this to them and make sure they're aware of it.
I served on this committee, and we spent considerable time discussing this because we really wanted, we have such good community partners, and we wanted to give those folks that use the schools every week and who give back so much to our schools, we wanted to give them a price break, was basically what it amounted to.
And they're probably already volunteering in the schools.
They are. They send proctors for testing. I mean, I don't think they'll have any problem meeting the volunteer component of that policy. And we just, we just felt like that we need to give back to them because they were giving so much to us. It's basically, am I correct in how I stated that?
And I do think that it will be, establish a true community partnership with the schools. So we're looking forward to that.
Yeah. With, I know, one of the concerns was with Legion Ball. And with the statement being that it's for students, I know Legion Ball, I think they may be carry on a year after they're no longer a student. Is that going to be an issue?
I think that, that, the policy, or the change that you're referring to is for the community agreement. They would fall under a travel team for us now. And so they, as long as they're sanctioned, and they are, we have already checked into that. And they are sanctioned, so they would qualify. American Legion does.
Thank you.
Board members, we need to take action on this, if it's okay. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I move to approve as presented.
Second. Okay. Any questions? All in favor, please say yea. Any noes? Thank you so much. Next is our appropriations of lottery funds. And I'll ask Dr. Jennifer Hepner to report on that.
Board members, you have two attachments in your agenda. I would ask that you open the second attachment. It is actually a spreadsheet that documents from the year 2009 to the 2015-16 school year. We have had a loss of lottery revenues totaling almost $1.9 million because of the change in the percentage that public school systems were eligible for. And I just wanted to attach that for your information. But at this time, I would like to read the resolution. Resolution of the Alexander County Board of Education on Requesting Restoration to Counties of Statutorily Authorized Appropriation of Lottery Funds. Whereas pursuant to Chapter 18(c) of the North Carolina General Statutes, the North Carolina State Lottery Act and the 2005 Appropriation Act was signed into law establishing the North Carolina Education Lottery. The Act created the nine-member North Carolina Lottery Commission to initiate, supervise, and administer the education lottery. And whereas the North Carolina Education Lottery was promoted and supported on the basis of proceeds enhancing local governments' ability to adequately provide for education expenses. And whereas the distribution to counties budgeted from proceeds in fiscal year 2015-16 has been drastically reduced to 100 million in contrast to 208 million at the previous statutory funding rate of 40%, which amounted to $354,488 in Alexander County, in contrast to $737,335 at the 40% rate. And whereas pursuant to state law, the lottery funds that are allocated to the counties can be used for education for capital outlay projects, including the planning, construction, enlargement, improvement, repair, or renovation of public school buildings, and for the purchase of land for public school buildings, or for the equipment to implement a local school technology plan. And whereas it is extremely difficult for the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education across this state to plan for improvements in school buildings and for technology equipment with the reduction of lottery funds. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Education respectfully requests that the governor and the North Carolina General Assembly support the allocation to counties at their statutorily authorized portion of educational lottery funds to be used for capital needs and technology. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution are forwarded to the local legislation delegation, to the North Carolina General Assembly, the North Carolina School Boards Association, and to the other 114 North Carolina local education agencies adopted this ninth day of May 2017.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment. There's over 100 school districts, school systems in North Carolina. And if we lost 1.8 million, imagine how the larger, how much the larger districts lost. What the General Assembly did was diverted those funds back to the general fund in part. So they violated their own general statute. So resolutions are wonderful, but class action lawsuits are even better. I move we adopt the resolution.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yea. Any opposed? And that passes. Thank you. And that will conclude our meeting tonight. The board will enter into closed session per North Carolina Statute 143-318. Thank you so much for coming and supporting us tonight.